Meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. I'd like to start off by having the members introduce themselves, starting on my far left.
Alan Weiner, City Planner.
Anthony Delaria, Commissioner.
Jerome Sorensen, Vice Chairman.
And on my far right.
Jody Philgagni, Alternate.
Terry Martin, Alternate.
Roland Loringer, Alternate.
Gary Herrig and Commissioner.
Ari Keaton, Commissioner.
Bill Bates, Chairman. For the record, the voting members tonight will be Commissioner Sorensen, Commissioner Herrigan, Commissioner Delaria, Commissioner Keaton, and myself. And as a reminder, our next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. We do not meet in August. Madam Secretary.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we move on to our first item for a little minute.
And Mr. Chairman, your packets is the minutes of your July 2nd special meeting concerning plant development update. The minutes of your meeting, of your June meeting are still being prepared by Mrs. Chaloner.
Okay, so the voting members on the special meeting minutes will be Commissioner Sorensen, Commissioner Herrigan, Commissioner Gagni, and myself. Motion would be in order.
Motion to approve the July 2nd minutes.
Sure.
Special.
Special, right.
Very special.
Motion was made in second. Any discussion? If not...
Okay.
If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next.
Okay. Next would be pending applications are none, we move on to new applications, none, zoning commission referrals, none, city council and other referrals, none, and we're on to old business, discussion of potential reuses of O'Connell School and Bingham School.
And Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, you'll recall that at your June meeting, as a result of various other meetings and research and site inspection of the listening session you held in mid-June, the Commission discussed its potential recommendations for the reuse of O'Connell School and Bingham School. And you will recall that there were a series of questions that staff prepared that you folks answered and gave us some direction on. And as a follow-up to that, we have prepared for your consideration and possible action this evening, a draft memo. It's got a July date, but we obviously don't know the formal date that it'll get transmitted. It'll be included in your packet. It's similar to, in format, to the memo that you sent to the Mayor and Council earlier this year on the potential reuse of Memorial Boulevard School. But obviously, this involves two schools, and we formatted some of this a little bit differently. But we believe that the Commission's position that you discussed and pretty much agreed on at your June meeting is reflected in this memo. Obviously, what we'd like to do this evening is get any final feedback. We're hopeful that, you know, this reflects what your recommendations were or are proposed to be to the Real Estate Committee. And we would be looking for a formal adoption of this memo as your recommendation to the Real Estate Committee on the reuse of O'Connell and Bingham Schools. We're certainly glad to answer any questions that you have about it. If there are any changes that you believe need to be made, anything to be added or revised, then we'd like to know that. But as I said, we're kind of hopeful that, you know, this pretty much will stand as drafted. That's obviously your call.
Okay. Commissioners, would you like to go over each bullet point and comment if any? Any was a starting point. Okay. Okay, following recommendations. So, "City should offer each of the properties for sale rather than retain the ownership of them." How does everybody feel about that? Okay? Yes? Okay. All right, very good. "If economically feasible, the former school building should be reused rather than demolished. To that end, the city should consider offering financial and other incentives to the respective buyer of each property. If doing so will make the preservation of the reuse of buildings more economically feasible than the demolition of the building or redevelopment of the site." Are you in agreement on that?
I agree with that, yes.
Okay.
Did we agree?
Okay. "The former O'Connell School building slash property should be reused in a manner consistent with the recommendations contained in the West End Neighborhood Studies, see attached."
And what we've attached is, if I can find it here, page 25 of the West End Study, formerly known as a plan for the West End Neighborhood. And we've attached the recommendation concerning the reuse of the O'Connell School property.
Any comments?
This is just the recommendation.
These are recommendations, right?
Then I'm good with the recommendation.
Okay.
Agreed.
All set.
Okay.
Good. "Although not an absolute preference by the Commission to the exclusion of potential uses, the reuse of the former Bingham School building for housing would be appropriate and desirable."
And if I might, this was the one recommendation that we struggled with how to word correctly because our recollection, and based on the notes that Bob and I took, the Commission didn't have a, didn't appear to have a strong preference, but they felt that housing was as good use as any, but they, but you certainly wouldn't rule out if somebody came along with another use that was economically viable and was consistent with zoning and whatever else. But you did mention housing as being appropriate for the site and then perhaps desirable, so that's how this ended up being ordered the way it did. We want to leave the door open for, I want to indicate that that was something the Commission felt would be appropriate, desirable, but to also leave the door open to other potential uses.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Does anybody have any preference if it's just low-income housing, or are we just going to say housing?
Any comments?
I should just say housing.
Housing.
I mean, I would assume that if we just say housing, it could entail low-income housing.
Yes, I'm asking if we're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with just housing. Okay. "A developer of the O'Connell School property should be encouraged to explore the possibility of making space in the building available to a local nonprofit organization and/or similar group for neighborhood or community-oriented purposes, e.g., a recreation center." I think...
I have no issues with that.
I don't either. Anybody else?
Who could look at it?
Okay. And the last recommendation, "Prospective buyers of the O'Connell School property should be advised in a FLOOD study of the Ploatic River is currently being conducted, and that recommendations from the study may affect how the property may be reused." Alan, you know how long that study may take or where it is?
I do not. I, no, I don't even want to speculate.
I have no issues with that. I do have a suggestion, though, because the first two bullets really refer to both buildings and those properties. Then we drop into talk about O'Connell, then we go to Bingham, then we go back to O'Connell for the last two, since the FLOOD study isn't really in our control as to how long it may take and everything. I would move that up to, like, bullet number three, and then put the other, the two O'Connell bullets together and then have Bingham.
Is there a last bullet?
Well, I don't know. We can put it as bullet four.
If I might, in the interest, in the interest of trying to get this off the table to the Real Estate Committee, do you really want us to have to go back? And I realize you don't need to come back to, do you really want us to rearrange this before we get it signed? I'll be honest, I'm trying to expedite this.
I can appreciate that. I would like it expedited, too. I just got a little, you know, tipsy-turvy reading one thing and then going to O'Connell and going on to something else and then coming back to O'Connell. But I have no problem, so is it as a stamp?
I'm in it with it.
From the story and stuff.
Okay. Any other comments?
No. I think it's okay, we're good.
Okay, my only other question to the Commission, as I see we have a couple of people in the audience, I know this is a public meeting, I don't know if anybody would want to comment if the Commission is okay with that, if they did want to comment.
Okay.
Would anybody like to comment on anything here?
That's right, but thank you.
I would, if I might, just to kind of keep the Commission in the loop, I've been attending meetings with the Real Estate Committee for the last few months, and at the most recent Real Estate Committee meeting, there was an individual who was there, you may recall during the listening session that you held in June, that there was a real estate agent there who indicated that he represented someone who was looking at each of the two buildings potentially for reuse. And that individual was at the Real Estate Committee meeting, at the most recent Real Estate Committee meeting, just to, largely to introduce himself and to let the Real Estate Committee know of his interests, recognize that there's a formal process that has to take place. But in the course of that, at the request of the Real Estate Committee, I gave them on a, we'll say, an unofficially informal basis, where this Commission appeared to be heading in terms of its recommendations. They recognized that they actually need a, the formal document from this Commission, but I think in the interest of trying to expedite the process, they, based on what they believe will be the Planning Commission's recommend, formal recommendations, they were willing to vote to move this along to the Council for their August meeting, try to expedite the process. Again, that's kind of the, some of that's part of the urgency, that our goal is to get this to the, to the Real Estate Committee as quickly as possible, so that they can keep this, keep this project, these two projects on track.
And the real estate meets before city council, that's all?
They actually talked about a spe, potentially having a special meeting, but whether they do or don't, I think if we can get this off our table and onto their table, then you'll have discharged your duties and they can proceed as they choose. They seem to be appreciative of, even on an informal basis here, where this Commission appeared to be heading.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, this would be a form of a motion for formal adoption to the Real Estate Committee. Motion would be in order for the recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Real Estate Committee on the reuses of O'Connell and Bingham School.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission formally adopt the memo to the Real Estate Committee of the Bristol City Council regarding the reuse of O'Connell and Bingham Schools in the memo dated July 20th, 2014, as presented to the Commission.
It doesn't actually have a date. I think you identified as the draft is presented.
Yeah, the draft, as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Motion, second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, carries. And I just want to thank the Commission for, you know, attending these work sessions and, you know, providing the comments that we finally ended up with tonight. And again, thank you for your time.
Let's start our business, new business. There are non-staff reports to monthly sub-division status report.
As we do every month, we include in your packets the subdivision status report. Two items of note. One, which I'll note in passing, is that the subdivision that you recently approved at 701 Jerome Avenue for Territor Rock, that the plan was filed on the city land records on July 15th, 2014, and that's highlighted in the report. The other item, which is highlighted, and many of you will be familiar with this, but I think we need to revisit for a quick period of time, is the Delfino subdivision off of Village Street. It's the very first subdivision in the list. It's application number 268, Cold Springs Farm, Section 4. This is off of Village Street. And I'm going to briefly go over the history of this. There's a lot of dates to be, to identify, but you'll see where this is leading. This subdivision was originally approved by the Planning Commission just over 10 years ago, on July 28th, 2004. And at the time of its approval, it received a conditional approval, which means that instead of having to actually start the subdivision work or post a bond, the developer was a, I'm sorry, fourth developer posted a bond or could start construction of houses, they could start doing work, installing infrastructure, which they haven't done, but they can't, they couldn't sell building lots. That's the conditions of a conditional approval. You may recall that conditional approvals in your subdivision regulations are good for two years. The first approval is good for two years, and then the subsequent will be approved for one year at a time, which you did in December of 2006. You extended the conditional approval to July 2007. In May of 2007, you extended the conditional approval to July 2008. In September of 2008, you extended the conditional approval again to July 2009. In 2009, now that would have been five years. And then in the interim, you amended your subdivision regulations, which allowed this Commission to extend conditional approvals beyond five years up to a total of 10 years. And that's consistent with state statutes. So, in December of 2009, you granted a sort of a retroactive extension to July 2011. In June of 2011, you granted another conditional approval and extension for two years to July 2013. And last year, in July of last year, you granted a conditional approval extension to July 2014. And at that point, Mr. Delfino has run out of conditional approval extensions, because the state law says that this Commission has the authority under the state law to grant conditional approvals up to a total of five years, and then beyond that, up to a total of another five years. So, conditional approvals are good for a total of 10, maximum of 10 years. Where this gets a little bit tricky is that in another part of the subdivision statutes, subdivisions are good, notwithstanding the issues associated with conditional approvals, subdivisions are good for nine years, and then can be extended beyond the nine years up to a total of another five years for a grand total of 14 years. So, the conundrum is that although conditional approvals are good, can be granted for up to a total of 10 years, a subdivision can go beyond that for another four years. And the way that we've interpreted this is that the only way it can go beyond the 10 years, the 10-year conditional approval, is it has to become a final approval, which means that if Mr. Delfino wants to keep this subdivision alive, he would have to submit a bond to the city, bonding the remain, all the site improvements, all the infrastructure, or he'd actually have to go out there and do it all. But he, he has not provided us with any indication as to what he wants to do. And I would just want to read into the record, this is the letter that was sent last year when you gave him his last conditional approval. "The Planning Commission at its meeting of June 26, 2013, voted to approve an extension of the conditional approval of the above subdivision to July 28, 2014. The Commission noted that, in accordance with the subdivision regulations and state statutes, this date represents the 10-year limit for conditional approval, and after that, bonding would be required to further extend the subdivision approval." So, Mr. Delfino has been aware for at least a year that if he wants to keep this subdivision alive, he has to post a bond. We have not heard anything from him. He hasn't given us any indication as to what he wishes to do. But as you'll note, Monday was the expiration of his conditional approval. It seems to us at a staff level, and this is kind of where this is all leading, that it would be helpful to know what Mr. Delfino's intent, or give him the opportunity to tell you what his intentions are before you take whatever your next action's going to be. If he says, "I'm going to post a bond," then you probably will want him to also extend the subdivision, or request that he extend the subdivision beyond the July 2014 date, because as best we can tell, he doesn't have anything, he has no time beyond that, because everything's been based on a conditional approval. So that if he wants, if he says, "Yeah, I want four more years, or three more years, or two more years," he's going to give us a bond. But I think he ought to be given that opportunity. On the other hand, he may say, "Unless I can get a conditional approval, which I can, I'm done. I can't do any further." In which case, you would want to know that, so you can then declare the subdivision null and void, so that the plans on the land records can reflect that. And then if he wanted to take up the subdivision again at a later date, he would then have to come back, file a new application, and start the process all over.
If he did that, could he have the conditional approval again for 10 more years?
Well, technically, he could. I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to grant them, but at that point, it's a brand-new application. So, it seems to us at a staff level that in the absence of knowing what he wants to do, that rather than take any action tonight, it may be appropriate for us to send him a letter, indicate to him that the Commission is going to take some action, well, unless the Commission hears from him prior to your September meeting requesting an extension of the subdivision and is being prepared to post a bond, that the Commission will declare the, will then at that meeting formally declare the subdivision null and void. At least he then knows that that's the next step. I think he's aware of all that now, but I think you want to sort of tie this up in a meat boat, have that paper trail. So, I don't know that there's any action, but I think if the Commission is good with that, and that's a consensus of the Commission, we will, we will follow up on that and put the item back on your September agenda for some action.
I think it's a good idea, because you don't, the last thing that we have on record is, what, a year ago?
That's correct.
So, I think that's a reason to eliminate all guesswork and find out what is planned out.
Everybody would care about it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then that's what we're doing. So, this, that item will appear on your, no matter what, it'll appear on your September 23rd agenda.
Thank you. Next.
We have Glenn Chalner for Substate and the 2000 Land Conservation Development.
Sure. As a reminder, your next meeting with Glenn Chalner of Planometrics is next Wednesday at 7:00 PM in the First Form Meeting Room. And if you can take, as I say, take one down and pass it around, we're providing you with a little bit of homework, as I think Mr. Chalner's indicated you would be doing. So, the agenda is there for the next meeting, and there is a, his most recent booklet. You'll notice that he went from booklets 1, 2, and 3 to 5. He will come back with 4, which apparently is the demographic, but he wanted to get this to you. So, we hope that you'll use the time between now and next Wednesday to look at that. His booklet will be posted online tomorrow, so if you happen to go away for a long weekend and forget to bring it with you and want to read it, it'll be up online as of tomorrow morning. And we'll go from there.
As a reminder to the Commission, if you cannot make it for whatever reason, just, you know, I don't know.
Alan?
Yes, I won't be able to make it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you're around. I won't be able to make it.
Anybody else? Okay, so we're down to five.
I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
All right. All right, well, whoever's there is there. That's the best we can do. If anybody who's not going to be there has any comments or questions, after they've had a chance to read that booklet, you can certainly call our office, or you can email us with any thoughts that you might have, and we can pass it along to Mr. Chalner.
Do you want a gentleman to say something?
I'm just wondering, is the booklet available online?
If you were listening to what I just said, it'll be up tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
It'll be up online tomorrow at the Planning, at the Plant Development Update website.
Thank you. And anybody that couldn't, can't make the meeting next week, I'll have the video up the following day.
There you go. Good. Thank you. That's a public service.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Before we leave, staff reports, two other things very quickly. One is that a number of you folks know, if not by having dealt with him directly, by name, Peter Forrest, the city surveyor. Pete worked, worked for the city for a number of years. He has retired. Peter retired last week. He was the guy who looked at a lot of the subdivision maps and lot line maps, and was a wealth of information. He was very, he's the, you may recall, he's the individual who, you know, helped initiate this monthly subdivision report, which I think has been a great help to this Commission. I do not know what, what the plans are to, to replace him. At the moment, I believe Mr. Chaloner is kind of carrying the ball on, you know, picking up whatever slack there is. But Peter will definitely be missed. We're going to have to try to figure out some ways to, if they haven't already been figured out, ways to make sure that this Commission continues to get the service that Peter provided, so. And the last thing that I have, and we will get you out by 7:30, that's promised. The most recent amendment to the zoning regulations that you may recall, that came to this board for recommendation, that Attorney Fury brought you a couple of months, a month or two ago, about increasing the number of employees in business and professional offices in the residential zone, going from three, a maximum of three to a maximum of eight. That did pass the zoning commission. I somehow think the vote was three to two, but don't, don't quote me on that. But anyway, so if, again, you'll take one, what we've given you is replacement pages for your regulations, is the cover sheet and two other pages, so you can each take a set of sheets, and then you can put those into your zoning regulations. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I got.
And we have one other, this is the Communication that Mr. Bates, the reappointed, to the Planning Commission.
By more years, hopefully.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bates. A job well done and a job to be continued.
It fits like 2019.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
No other business?
Motion? Motion to a jury?
I did.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, carries. Thank you.
See you next Wednesday.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
We'll see you.
Hope this Realtor guy doesn't take six years to figure out.
I'm going that way.
Sure.
Sure. That'll be up, that should be up by, we want to wait till the Commission got it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. No, I just wanted it for the video, I didn't realize that. I was trying to send my wife a message. So, I don't want to interrupt when you already said something.
No, it'll be up probably, it'll certainly be up by the end of the day. I anticipate that it'll probably be up by noon time. We want to wait till the Commission got it first, and then, but it should be up there by noon time. I mentioned it to Bob, and he's going to listen to this, so that should be, if it's not up there by the end of the day, let me know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.